Good evening. Today is Wednesday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, for the Association of the Board and School Trustees in the School City of East Chicago. The time is now six oh two P M. The place is School City of East Chicago Administration Building, fourteen oh one East one hundred and forty-fourth Street, East Chicago, Indiana, four six three one two. And it's also via livestream at W W W dot S T E C dot K twelve dot I N dot U S. This, this is the meeting of the school board and the public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Can you please have roll call discussed? Justice Rodriguez?
Present.
Justice Gomez?
Present.
Justice Williams?
Present.
Justice Smith?
Present.
Chairman Anderson. Present. Can we please rise for the flag of allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, to the Republic, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, prior to the business portions, superintendent.
Yes, I would like to, uh, remove an item from the personnel report. I'm requesting one approval to remove item, uh, personnel report twenty-three eighty-seven.
Is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, make a motion.
Second.
Justice Rodriguez makes a motion for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Justice Gomez. Any questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson.
Yes.
I would also like to add an M O U to the, uh, uh, business portion as well. M O U is seconded for extra days work during summer school.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President.
Well, I'm sorry, we don't have to make that agenda items, just gonna go under the actual contracts for the certified non-certified.
You can do it either way. In the other way, she's, she's asked that it be added to the agenda, you could do it that way, or because it's related to item number two, and you're gonna approve a document there, that document can be included with the M O U, and just take one vote on one item, so it's more efficient to do it that way.
Yeah.
So we'd like to add it to the approval of certified non-certified administrative contracts, including the M O U.
Correct, correct. It may be worth explaining now, um, to both of the trustees, who are sitting virtually, what we're saying. I may not have this in front of them.
Okay. Um, trustees, we're gonna have explanation now in regards to the M O U that's gonna be added to item number two, which is the approval of certified non-certified administrative contract. Superintendent.
Well, it's not necessarily overview, I just wanted to explain to them what we're talking about, because they may not have this in paper in front of them.
Okay.
So, um, trustees Gomez and Rodriguez, we've got an M O U regarding, um, this, the second for summer school work, that will, that document, um, which is the M O U, will be made a part of agenda item number two, so that, uh, your approval will be required of both documents at the same time. I just want to make sure you understand what the change is.
Hello.
Thank you.
You don't need to do any, those are just explanations.
Next, so we'll now go into this portion. Moving to this portion of the meeting, um, item number one, approval of personal report with the removal of doc number twenty-three eighty-seven. What is the pleasure of the board? Justice Smith makes a motion for approval.
A second motion.
Justice Williams seconded the motion. Any questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Item number two, approval of certified non-certified administrative contracts. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, make a motion for approval.
Justice Williams makes a motion for approval.
Second.
I'll.
Seconded the motion. Any questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson.
Yes.
Make sure the minutes reflect that the approval by the board is of, uh, the administrative contracts and the M O U regarding.
Next, we have approval of psychologist contract with Solian, superintendent.
Yes, I'm seeking approval of the speechless psychologist contract.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President. I'll second the motion.
Okay, so, uh, Justice Smith makes a motion for approval, and Justice Rodriguez seconded the motion. Are there any questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Yes, item number four, approval of speech services contract with Solian, superintendent.
Yes, I'm requesting the board approval of the speech services contract.
What is the pleasure of the board?
President.
Justice Williams makes a motion for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Justice Rodriguez seconded the motion. Any questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Yes, item number five, approval of sign language interpreter service for twenty twenty-one graduation ceremony, superintendent.
Yes, I'm requesting approval of the sign language interpreter contract for services used in the twenty twenty-one high school graduation.
What is the pleasure of the board? Justice makes a motion for approval. Justice Smith makes a motion for approval.
Second the motion.
Justice Williams seconded the motion. Any questions?
Madam President.
Justice Gomez?
I don't have a question, it's more of a comment. I'd like to see these, um, uh, types of contracts, uh, brought before the board prior to the actual activity, uh, rather than after. Uh, that's all I have.
Any other questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Yes. Item number six, approval of M O U with A F T local five eleven stipend for extra duties during COVID nineteen pandemic.
Yes, I'm requesting approval of the M O U with the A F T five eleven for the, uh, stipend for the extra duties during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Justice Smith, we're about to table the motion. Next meeting, um. Would you can explain, uh, the reason for it?
I can't, um, and in fact, I think if maybe we're final, there's a representative committee here as well. So I know that there was some discussion regarding some of the terms of the M O U, and in particular, uh, the timing of the payment to the teachers. Um, I don't believe there's any issue that any of the trustees have with regards to providing the stipend. I think the only question is the timing of the payment of the stipend, and the condition that the, um, that, that the employees remain employed for a certain period of time. There was some inquiry made of Attorney Dave Dixon, who handles the labor of humans for the school district, regarding, um, the possibility of making that payment sooner rather than later, um, and coordinating that with, um, the CFO, Ms. Simmons, who's here as well, and I think that's the reason, uh, for the recommendation to table the matter, simply to, to look into whether or not those stipend payments can be expedited as opposed to, um, later on, pursuant to the term.
So it would be full payment rather than just the portion. We would ask for a full payment rather than just portion.
I think the two options would be either full payment immediately or, uh, sooner than was contemplated by the M O U, at some point sooner, so the idea is to make it more attractive for the teachers.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, go ahead, you take that. Uh, motion to table the motion by Ms. Smith and Justice Smith, and we have a second by Justice Williams. Are there any questions?
Just a, just a comment, Madam President. Um, obviously, when you have an attorney as well as a union who's actually negotiated a contract, um, you know, it's obligation to this board to ratify the contract, but, um, as far as making recommendations and tabling a contract that's already been signed, that was my, that's my concern.
Justice Rodriguez, first and foremost, this is not something that you have to go through with the teachers. This is actually we were being curious and training them in and having a conversation. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, um, nothing was signed. Nothing was signed by us, nothing was signed by them, nothing was signed.
Oh, okay. It's my understanding, before it came to this agenda, that they would, they would sign the contract.
No, it's different because the stipend rather than, he doesn't secure extra federal money, it's a difference. It's not their contract.
And if I could add, just, Trustee Rodriguez, this is to your point, I did communicate with Attorney Dixon, uh, before giving this overview tonight at the board meetings, and he was aware, uh, that we'd be having this discussion. He was aware of it.
Any other questions?
Madam President.
Justice Gomez?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no on this one. I, I'm, I'm okay with it as it stands. I understand the, uh, Attorney Harris's position as well. Um, so I'm kind of in the middle on this one, but, um, I, I think at the end of the day, it's all gonna come up, uh, the same, so, uh, I just wanna make that comment before the vote. That's it.
Any other questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
No.
Justice Gomez?
No.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Yes, item number six, approval of M O U with A, I'm sorry. Approval of articles of agreement for crafts and Teamsters, superintendent.
Yes, I'm requesting approval of the, um, crafts and Teamsters contract agreement.
Madam President, I'd like to table. Um, Justice Smith has requested to table this item also. Is there a second? Justice Gomez seconded the motion. Are there any questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Yes, item number eight, approval of agreement with transportation employees, bus drivers, and bus aid superintendent.
Yes, I'm requesting approval of the transportation contract agreement.
What is the pleasure of the board? Madam President, I make a motion for approval. Justice Smith makes a motion for approval.
Second the motion.
Justice Rodriguez seconded the motion. Any questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Yes, approval number nine, um, sorry, item number nine, approval recommendation for Harrison and McKinley floor replacement superintendent.
Yes, I'm requesting approval of the Harrison and McKinley floor replacements. Uh, Director, uh, Franciscus, we see three bids for each proposal work, and I am recommending, uh, that we uphold his recommendations.
What is the pleasure of the board? Madam President, I make a motion for approval. Justice Smith makes a motion for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Justice Rodriguez seconded the motion. Any questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Yes, item number ten, approval, approval of A M G Construction Kerry Gash pre-K updates restroom, superintendent.
Yes, I'm requesting approval for the bathroom updates at Kerry, Kerry Gash pre-K school.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, make a motion.
Justice Rodriguez makes a motion for approval.
Second.
Justice Smith seconded the motion. Any questions?
Madam President.
Justice Gomez?
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like more clarification on this.
Yes, well, on, on one side of the old Kerry Gash, um, uh, only a portion of the bathrooms are updated for the pre-K students, so this proposal will update more other bathrooms, um, in the, uh, building.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I thought when we had converted it to a, a pre-K that, uh, we, or elementary, that we had taken care of all that years ago.
My only question, this is, uh, is this stuff coming out of the law?
Okay.
No, the, uh, law.
This is hoping to you to come out of the law proceeds that was left over, that was not sent back to the state.
For the Kerry Gash.
Well. The disaster.
Yeah.
My question is, I know we have three bids. Once again, my question about bids, are we going with the lowest bid, or are we going with the quality of work that we're gonna expect from these bids?
This particular case, we went with the lowest bid, and also the bid of the contractor that did the actual other side of the building.
Okay, so he familiar with the work already? Okay. Um, was it because of the amount that we? Nevermind, I actually.
So, so just, that's the reason why we're doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam President.
What's your review?
Superintendent, right, you said, you said old Kerry Gash. In your statement, was it old Kerry Gash or the new Kerry Gash?
New Kerry Gash to pre-K student.
Okay. Done it.
Any other questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Yes, approval, um, item number eleven, approval of Sedexo yearly renewal.
Yes, I'm requesting approval of the Sedexo yearly contract renewal that begins July first and ends June thirty of twenty twenty-two.
What is the pleasure of the board? Madam President, I make a motion for approval. Justice Smith makes a motion for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Rodriguez seconded the motion. Any questions?
Madam President.
Justice Gomez?
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering, uh, as we were talking about bids earlier, are we considering other services, or are we just going with them because they're convenient?
Right now, from my understanding, that, um, this is the contract that we're going to, um, um, enforce, uh, because they have been providing great services to us, so at this time, no other bids.
I, I, I would just like to, in the future, see, um, other opportunity, this opportunity given to other companies. Uh, I don't have an issue with Sedexo, but I know there's other organizations, companies out there that can provide services. Um, I think we should do ourselves that, or give ourselves that opportunity to listen to other, um, vendors as well.
Justice Gomez, this actual contract is a five-year renewal contract, and you know, each year we have to do amendment to it, and that's what this is up under, but yes, um, and I do believe it's beginning of next year, I will hold out for bids of all other companies.
Thank you very much.
Ms., um, Simmons, when we go off with, can, um, so I know there's complaints from students about the food that's been given. I would love to see students evolve in, you know, the process of this because, uh, we service them, and sometimes they don't eat what is given to them, and they see the, the food that comes in, they, they know what comes in on Monday, though, you know, on Thursday still. Um, and I think we need to watch that from this company. Um, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Just a way of making out.
Yes. Yes.
But I just have my comment. I mean, I do agree with Justice Gomez and a lot of bids, but during this pandemic, I have to just say this, they weren't there for this district, whether the community used it or not, but daily, lunches and breakfasts were prepared, so I'm just saying, we can look for other vendors, and then you have made the statement that they also used to feed the football teams or whatever, after school, after school activities. So, yeah, so when we're looking for different vendors, we have to look at the whole picture that's going to benefit our community, but I do understand what you're saying, so when we start to looking for bids for different food companies, we have to make sure that they're community oriented, because that's very, very important. And I know, you know, some of the things that kids don't like, but then they have to understand that it's, uh, requirement for nutritious meals, and maybe they can keep it up a little bit, but so far, I just wanna thanks to that goal for being there for us, and we had so much food that children couldn't even really give it away, so I just wanna thank them for that.
Any other questions?
Madam President. Yeah, just, just to clarify, I think Jesse was talking about comparisons. I don't think he was talking about the quality of, of the food service, but my question is to the CFO, CFO, CFO. Um, how many years are we in with Sedexo on this contract?
We're in five years.
Well, this is, this is the fifth year coming up, or, or we?
Four year, but I would have to check to make sure, but with the new state regulations, we are available to go out for bid within that five year, if we feel suited to the board on the council. That's with the new state regulations.
Okay, so we're, are we solidifying a, a four-year contract? And they still have one year? Is that what it, are we doing, or we, or is it up to this board now to decide whether we want to go out for bid for next year?
At this point, if we go out for bid, we would not have food service for the beginning of the school year.
Okay, so this is the fifth, this is the fifth.
I think so, but don't quote me on that. I would really have to check. So I know they have been here since I've been here.
So, Trustee Rodriguez, what's, before you know, the amendment calls for a one-year extension, basically, so this is just a one-year deal that we're talking about now, and subject to the provisions of this amendment, it does allow for two additional one-year extensions, if, if you choose to exercise it. So what you could do is, if you were to extend this for the upcoming school year, that one-year term, you still have the option of two additional extensions, kind of in your back pocket, and you could do what Trustee Gomez recommended, is go out for bid, see how those numbers look. If the numbers aren't any better, you can exercise the, uh, extensions that's in the, in this amendment that's in front of you now. So, if you like, we could talk about it in more detail later, but I think those are the basic terms that are in front of you now.
Okay.
And we will have to start that bid in January, to make sure that we have a company in place for the next school year.
Any other questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
No.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yeah.
Chairman Anderson. No. Approval donations to C H S. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, I move for approval.
Justice Gomez makes a motion for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Justice Rodriguez seconded the motion, and I would just like to reference, um, our attorney in regards to this item, um, solely because there was confusion, and, um, if we could, Steve, please?
Yes, this came up at the last board meeting, and there was some question regarding, uh, concerns expressed by the state board of accounts in terms of the donation. It's an issue that's been lingering for quite some time, superintendent Wright, followed up with state board of accounts received an opinion in writing, basically indicating that it is appropriate for us to accept the donation, uh, by this individual, um, that there is no issues with it. I think there was issues in the past regarding, uh, an unauthorized fundraiser, that's what implicated the issue. Those issues have been resolved by the fact that the donation is being awarded to the school in the name of the individual, so it's like any other donations. So then, I also recommend.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Yes, item number thirteen, approval of donations to block the school. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve.
Justice Rodriguez makes a motion for approval.
A second motion.
Justice Williams seconded the motion. Any other questions? Ms. Castro, please. Justice Rodriguez?
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson. Yes, next will go to Superintendent remarks.
I have no remarks today.
Next will go to the trustee remarks.
Madam President.
Justice Gomez?
Um, I just, a comment on the last motion, um, we continue to approve, uh, the donations, but we don't see the expenditures, and that's something that I'd like to see in the future, and perhaps, uh, we develop that in the policy committee, or even the finance committee, but, um, I don't have a problem accepting donations. I, I just wanna see what's happening on the other side, once we accept those. That concludes my comment.
Any other trustee comments? Next, we'll move to public forum.
Madam President. Uh, I just wanna make note to that this Saturday is the fifth annual co-what shorty, uh, stand-in football camp, gonna be held at Central High School. Registration have already taken place. Uh, the camp will be at East Chicago Central High School football field, as well as, I believe, they're using the gym basement as well, uh, eight AM to three PM, uh, at East Chicago Central High School, so this is fifth annual camp. Uh, I think he's gonna have a DJ, and, uh, kids are gonna meet other NFL players, so I think it'd be something ready for us to come out and support. That concludes my comment. What's that?
So? Anybody for public forum?
Yes.
Uh, public forum is an opportunity for the public to participate in the public meeting. When you approach the podium, you could at least state your name, um, your address, uh, your comments will be limited to three minutes, due to respect owed for, uh, and staff, and do not discuss any individual personnel issues.
Helen Steinbach?
Good evening, Helen Steinbach, fifty-two oh seventy-third Avenue, Maryville, Indiana. Um, I was here to say thank you, um, but now we're waiting again, and I think that there's good intentions, but we've been working really hard since March of twenty twenty, and it would sure be nice to have some money to put in our teachers' pockets tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next would be Mrs. Gilda Ormond.
Oh, I'm not going to, I, I thought I was gonna have to say something.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Patty Gibson King, forty-one oh two Parish Avenue. I'd just like to present a card to Mrs. Selena Simmons on behalf of another from the H R B and our community.
Thank you.
Next, um, we made time for a meeting, and it's a holiday on July fourth, um, the next day, the school's actually out. We haven't sent, set a date yet, so, um, we'll have it posted after we have a discussion amongst the board when the date will be available. Um, we'll, we should have posted outside as well as, um, on our website. Have a motion for adjournment.
Madam President, I make a motion for adjournment.
Justice Williams makes a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Justice Smith second the motion. No comments, yes.
Yes.
Justice Gomez?
Yes.
Justice Williams?
Yes.
Justice.